So, we do, I call it an ethics training. It's a little broader than that. It gets into the process by which elected boards operate, as well as provisions related to ethics. We like to do this every couple of years. Even for those of you who have sat through this before, I think it will be helpful to have an opportunity to rehear this. I actually updated this outline on Sundays, because there is some new court decisions that have affected how we process applications and how we deal with executive sessions. So, I want to start by noting that under the Colorado code, holding elected office entails what's called a public trust. And it's created by the confidence which the electorate reposes in the integrity of public officials. It's very lofty. You essentially have fiduciary duties to carry out your elected activities in an ethical and honest way. The district attorney does have jurisdiction to bring judicial proceedings on behalf of the people against elected officials who do not act ethically. Doesn't happen very often, but it does occasionally. And I think it just underscores the fact that in Colorado, I think we take good, open governance seriously. There are other states that don't have laws and procedures in place that create as open and transparent of a governing process as we have here in Colorado. So, as a board, and you'll see that I've referenced some provisions in this outline to both the charter and then further down to Resolution 18. You can use this as a bit of a guideline if you want to go into more depth to understand kind of what these provisions mean in the context of the charter itself. So, as the town Board of Trustees, you act in three different ways. You act legislatively, which is to say you have the function of adopting provisions of the code which apply to the residents of the town of Silt. In that respect, you're not all that different than the state legislature in terms of enacting laws. And legislative enactments are approved by ordinance. Ordinances, as we'll talk about, have two readings and some specific procedures by which they get adopted. And on legislative matters, you are free to talk with your constituents about what the town is trying to accomplish. And we're going to get into situations where that's not always true. And it's very important for you, as board members, to keep in mind when a concerned citizen comes up to you and says, "I want to talk to you about," fill in the blank, you kind of have to think through, is this a legislative matter? Is this a quasi-judicial matter? Or is this an administrative or executive matter? Because what you can talk to people, the public, about differs depending on what type of activity the board is undertaking. So, the next item is quasi-judicial. And this is where the board really is asked to function a little bit like a court, which is why it's called quasi-judicial. You are adjudicating the rights of an individual, usually a property owner, but not always, to undertake an activity pursuant to criteria in the town code. So, in other words, you are going to take evidence in the form of staff reports, an applicant who's going to speak. There might be public comment. People may have submitted comments via email or otherwise to Sheila. You then take all this information into consideration. You think about the criteria in our town code for granting a permit, or a license, or a subdivision. And you then render a decision based on that. And the important thing about quasi-judicial matters is that your deliberations, that is, the information you receive, come in the public hearing, in this room. Because someone who is denied a quasi-judicial approval has the right to appeal it. And that appeal is based upon the record that we create in the public hearing. So, if someone comes to you and says, "I want to talk to you about that marijuana license, or liquor license, or building permit, or subdivision that, you know, that's being proposed." You, and it's a little awkward, but you have to say, "I am so happy you're interested in this public matter. Please give your comments to Sheila, or Jim Mann, or even better, come to the public hearing. We want to hear what you have to say." And then you need to kind of put your earmuffs on and not listen. Occasionally, we get a situation where a trustee has had a substantive conversation about a matter and then kind of halfway through is like, "Oh, I just realized, I'm not supposed to talk about this." That is generally okay. You do have to disclose the communication and give a rough description of what it was. And then you need to affirm that you can make a decision on the permit or application based upon what is received in the public hearing. In other words, you can kind of separate your ex parte communication from what is presented in the public hearing. It happens. It's not the end of the world. If, for some reason, you feel that you were so persuaded by that ex parte communication, you can recuse yourself. So, it's, you know, not the end of the world.
So, I got a question, I guess.
Yes.
This just is happening. So, I manage the storage units out there. I've been talking to Nicole, the people behind them. They're building behind us. And I've been talking to the landowners around. But I've made it well-known that I'm talking to them as the manager of the storage unit, not the trustee. Because I've been talking to Nicole. We've talked to the landowners around because we've had some problems or whatever. So, is that right? I mean, I manage it. I have to. And I know if it comes before the board, and I don't think, whatever, I would have to. I would recuse myself because I am the manager and I would profit from one way or the other.
So, I was going to say that, subject to the conflict of interest provisions that we will talk about in a minute, you would, I would encourage you, if you're going to not recuse yourself, not have those conversations. But if you acknowledge that, you know, there is either an actual conflict or an appearance of a conflict that you want to avoid, and you're going to voluntarily recuse, well, you can have those conversations in your capacity as the manager. You just need to not communicate your thoughts and opinions to your fellow board members because, again, they must continue to sit in this quasi-judicial capacity.
And that's what it was. And like I said, Nicole's been real helpful. And she knows, and I've told her, I've come in as the owner or manager, not as a trustee, because we've had problems and we went through it all. So, I just want to make sure that's where it was.
And we're going to be real careful not to talk about that application in this particular meeting. But, again, your instincts have been correct that you acknowledge that you're going to recuse and therefore you can engage in discussions. But you will have to acknowledge the conflict and recuse yourself from sitting on the board.
Good.
Okay. And then our final item is administrative-executive. These are matters kind of unique to local government. You act in all these different capacities, these different hats, which, at the state level, we have judges that decide one thing and a legislature that enacts laws, and a governor who's the executive. It all kind of gets squished together in local government. And so, you also give direction and make decisions for the town of things that are just kind of an administrative, day-to-day thing. "We're going to consider a reimbursement contract today." You're going to make a decision about that. That's just how the town's being administered. So, and those items generally get approved by a voice vote, where you get information from your staff. It's not a public hearing. You're always welcome to take public comment. But on matters that are administrative in nature, you do not have to actually hold a public hearing where you take public comment. You can just simply gather information from your staff, have a voice vote, and move on to the next item. Procedures for trustee action. So, we've got ordinances, resolutions, and motions. Ordinances are the most formal way by which you, as a Board of Trustees, act. Generally, these are things that are, deal with amendments or additions to the town code. You're acting legislatively. You're authorizing appropriations of town funds. You're authorizing the town to incur debt. That doesn't happen very often, but it does occasionally. And/or you're disposing of town real property. So, these formal actions, they come in front of you twice. There is kind of a formal reading of the title by the mayor. And then there is a public hearing requirement associated with ordinances. We generally have a public hearing at both the first reading and the second reading, which I think is great. Gives the public plenty of opportunities to participate. You really only have to do one public hearing. But, again, I think the ethos of the town of Silt is more public involvement is the desired outcome. There are emergency ordinances. We have, in my 10-year tenure, 10-year time as being town attorney here, I think we've only done one of them. It was for a moratorium, to give the town some time to get some code provisions in place. That's generally how they are used for things that have to happen quickly, that affect health and safety. There is a requirement for emergency ordinances of kind of a supermajority. You won't see these very often. Resolutions, these are a formal proclamation or decision of the town. We use, there's only one reading. There is not a requirement for a public hearing, generally, except for the budget, which has its own distinct rules. And generally, the budget is adopted by resolution. But this can be everything from a proclamation to honor the high school basketball team, to adopting a formal policy for the town or adopting a major contract. So, we used a resolution when we entered into the contract to build a water treatment plant. Big things, formalize it with a resolution. Then there are motions. And that is just kind of the quick, "Hey, we got a contract. We want the board to approve it." Quick discussion, motion, second vote. Everybody moves on. Voting, voice votes versus roll call. Roll call votes are for ordinances, generally. And voice votes are for resolutions or for motions. But under your town charter, any one of you can request a voice vote, or, I'm sorry, a roll call vote. So, if there were a resolution that you felt was important enough that each individual trustee go on the record as to how you're voting, any one of you can say, "Sheila, I'd like us to do a roll call vote here." We don't have a lot of parliamentary procedure. Part of it is up here on this chart in terms of how the mayor runs public hearings. Part of it is that there is generally a motion and a second. And once there's a motion and a second, there is an opportunity for discussion between the board. At that point, public comment is done. People should not be standing up and asking to speak once a motion is on the table. Frequently with this board, there's already been some conversation before we get to the motion and the second part of it. That's not a problem. But, again, the formal procedure is once a motion has been seconded, you then can have discussion and then a vote as to whether the motion is approved or denied. Quorum, a majority, we have to have a majority of you, which is four, in order to conduct business. And this generally has not been a problem with this board, but a few times, we've met with only four board members. And that can become a little challenging if someone has a conflict all of a sudden. So, your attendance is important. We do have provisions in the code that if you have situations that require you to be either at home or on the road and you want to participate electronically, you can do that with Zoom. I think, through my experience, it's really important, if you're going to do that, that you have a really good internet connection and the ability to follow what's going on. I've been part of some public meetings with a public official on Zoom, coming in, coming out, fuzzy, you know, participation. That does not aid the public process.
In that case, you're better off just not.
You're better off just not to participate.
Not participating, even.
Yeah. A unique thing about your charter is that any member can abstain from any vote in his or her discretion, including without limitation, line item abstentions. I have only seen this happen once or twice, and it was in the budget. And it goes back maybe six, seven years. There was some back and forth between factions on council as to whether a certain item was going to get funded or not. And the budget then got approved with a couple of the members abstaining from, fund whatever it was that they didn't like. So, you know that you can abstain. An abstention generally does not affect the quorum requirements unless if there is kind of a supermajority mandate in either state statute or in our charter to approve something. So, you know, if you don't want to vote, you don't have to. Items on the agenda. You do have the right, as members of the board, to request that items come onto the agenda. Your method for doing that is to have a conversation with the town administrator. The town administrator generally then will talk to the mayor, who sets the agenda. Sometimes there are things that there is a difference of opinion about whether that should get on the agenda. And the mayor has the right to use his discretion, not to put it on. I think the procedure, if a conflict really arose over that, doesn't happen very often, is that you could bring it up in your board comment period and ask a majority of the members of the board to put that item on the next agenda. So, we do need items 24 hours in advance. That's state law, that matters to be discussed and decided by the board. The public has the right to 24 hours' notice as to what you're going to meet about. Conduct of meetings. Talked about the agenda requirements, work sessions. These are inactive. I think, isn't this a work session? Correct. Yeah, there we go. Where you just get information. And you, as a board, have the right to ask questions. The public does not in a work session. We sometimes do this for, if we're trying to enact a very large code and we just want to have an open discussion with the board about provisions and what you think should be in and what you think should be out, work session is a good way to kind of deal with those big-time, kind of time-intensive issues. The public is always welcome to participate in a work session. But, again, there's not, it's not a public hearing. There's not a right to public participation. Duties of the mayor, the mayor pro tem. Again, and I think this really, this board generally does really well with this. The mayor regulates the meeting. It's important that we only have one person recognizing the rights of people to speak in public hearings, regulating how the discussion plays out, and then regulating the discussion between board members when a motion is made. That is the function of the mayor. Under your charter, the mayor does vote. There are some charters where the mayor doesn't vote. You have a voting mayor charter. And it, one thing I would really encourage you not to do, because this is the biggest way I see meetings go off the rails, is during a public comment to try and engage in a dialogue directly with the public. It almost never goes well. Maybe if you have one person in the room, okay. But when you've got a public hearing with a number of people, you need to let the mayor give the public time. And you can take notes of what you want to say or respond to, or have staff gather more information by maybe asking some questions of certain members of the public. But don't engage in a dialogue. It never ends well. It's my admonition to you.
It never ends.
It never ends. That's right. Yep. Open meetings, open records. This is, well, before we go there. So, this first part that we just went through really is process. How does the council function? Under different circumstances? How are meetings run? Questions about process. Observations from things we've done in the past that you're like, "Well, you know, now that I hear this, why did we do this a certain way?" Happy to take any comments or questions.
I have a question about not engaging in a dialogue during public comments.
Yes.
If somebody up here were so moved, would it be okay for them to do it during board comments at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Where it's not a dialogue as such?
Not a dialogue. Or, once the public hearing is closed and the public, again, you can't get into dialogue at that point because the public is no longer talking, you can, as part of your comments about the ordinance or resolution, whatever it may be, I think you can respond to things you heard that you, you know, "I heard an inaccuracy. For the record, I want to state, you know, ..." Or, you know, respond in a constructive way. It is also possible that, again, if you have questions for the member of the public, I have seen at times that a board member will say, "Okay, you know, Ms. Jones spoke about this issue. I have a follow-up question for her to ask that." And that the mayor has the ability to allow Ms. Jones to come up and present additional information. But you got to be real careful. Because, again, once you get into a back-and-forth dialogue with the public, the following that procedure becomes very hard. So, anything else?
I've got one.
Yeah.
So, for as long as I can remember, even just being a trustee on the board, is we don't always do ordinances with a roll call vote.
We should remember to do that.
To do that? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
That doesn't invalidate anything, but your charter contemplates ordinances that will happen by roll call.
By roll call? Okay.
No, I mean, obviously, roll call vote. If it's unanimous, it's kind of obvious what the roll call was. And most, a lot of times, it is unanimous, so it's not. But if there is anybody that votes against, it probably would be a good idea.
Yeah, whenever it's close, we always, I mean, if it's a four-three decision, then we always resort to a roll call vote.
If there's just one dissenting voice, a lot of times, we don't. But that probably would be a good idea. It's a good comment.
It doesn't hurt. It doesn't take that long. So, just as a practice pointer to you. Yeah. In terms of the dialogue during a public hearing, is it acceptable to ask a clarifying question? My preference of how that gets done is to let the public dialogue finish. Because sometimes that additional information comes out through another member of the public. Keep some notes. And, again, if the mayor is willing to allow a clarifying question to be answered, bring it through the mayor. The mayor can call the person up. They can provide additional information. Okay. Okay. Open meetings, open records. Again, you know, I mentioned Colorado, I think, is pretty progressive on how it promotes government being open and transparent. Meetings have to be open with some very, very limited exceptions. And meetings can be things that you may not think are meetings. It doesn't always happen in this chamber. What the rule says is that there is a meeting that must be open to the public if there are, in your case, three or more members of the board discussing, quote, "Any public business," close quote, is a public meeting. And that must be noticed, and the public has the right to attend.
I have a question.
Yes.
I was going to go to the Parks and Recreation meeting, but I think there's already two trustees that go. So, then what happens?
That is a, well, if you're going to do that and you're going to actively participate, that probably needs to be noticed, both as a meeting of the Parks and Rec Commission? Do we have a board? Community group?
Did we vote a volunteer? Because if...
Well, it doesn't matter whether we voted or volunteered if there's three of us there in a meeting of any kind.
It's, and you're discussing public business. It needs to be noticed as a board meeting, and it needs to be open to the public. So, you can talk to Jim about how to handle that. That being said, you're not going to actually take, I assume, any votes at that meeting. It just needs to be noticed that it's going to happen. And there may be three members of the board there. That allows you then to talk, communicate, state preferences. But you're not going to take any, it's not like there's an agenda item for the Board of Trustees where you're going to vote on anything. That would, I assume, come back to the board in a regular meeting where it would be further discussed and a formal vote would be taken.
We can, we'll work with you on the proper language.
Okay.
Well, basically, it almost would be just like published. Similar to a work session like this is almost what it would be. And like a work session, it's open to the public, but the public doesn't, we wouldn't have to allow them to participate, so the meeting can flow.
I think that's right. Yeah.
I have a standard announcement that I post out front when we have meetings like that, that just give the public notice that there's going to be more than two board members present to discuss, or to, just present at any gathering, if you will.
Okay.
And I specify what that gathering is so they know what it's about.
Much better.
Well, if it's going to make things...
No, no. I, it is something we can accommodate. It's just, we need to know that's going to happen before. You know, in another situation, like if, you know, if three or more of you show up at, like, the Board of County Commissioners meeting to, you know, if there's some policy or something that they're talking about, we probably need to notice that, that we're having a public meeting at the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Certainly, when the board comes down here, they do, you know, kind of the occasional roving meeting. Both the town and the county notice that as a public meeting of their respective boards. So, just pay attention. If you think more than two of you are going to show up to something that involves the public business, talk to Jim Mann. If there's a, Jim can talk to me about it.
Can we, like, delineate that in the notice that we're just, we're all attending? We're not having a meeting in the Commissioner's room?
I think that's, I think that's right. It's just a, it's just a notice that...
Technically, it rises to the level of public meeting because three of us will be attending. Letting everyone out.
Yes. So, what happens if it's on a whim? "Oh, hey, I forgot that was tonight." And then somebody just pops in.
That's the bigger problem. And, I don't know. I guess I would encourage one of you to not participate. Right?
Short of straw.
Or who wants to go home?
I will tell you, from my experience, we noticed every committee meeting that a quorum of the elected officials may show up.
That just covers it.
Oh, okay. So, it's a...
Just cover it. And we can start doing that here, even though we don't expect the quorum to be there. But just in case.
Just in case.
And that saves us from any grief.
Yep.
Well, the committee meetings are important because they allow us to have some deep discussions and not bog down to the bi-weekly meeting, bi-monthly meetings.
So, again, I don't think it's something that's been a problem with this board, So, again, I, I don't think it's something that's been a problem with this board, but it's something to keep in your head, that, again, if, if there's some kind of public event, or public meeting where the public business is being discussed, and you think more, three or more of you are gonna be there, let Sheila, let Jim know, and they'll just notice it, and everything is fine. I would note, the state statute does not preclude you from getting, all seven of you could get together and, and have drinks of your choice, and talk about rafting down the river, or whatever non-business topics you wanted to. That is not a public meeting. It, it is a meeting, a meeting happens when you discuss the public's business. So, you know, if you run into a couple of your board members at one of the concerts, and you just want to talk about the great music, and how awesome it is that Silt's community comes together, that's okay. But don't get into deep discussions about the upcoming ordinance, or what we should be doing with the park, or those kinds of things. Emails, or, I'm sorry, meetings can occur in some tricky ways. They can occur on a telephone, get three members, you know, use your, your smartphone to get two other board members on the line to discuss something, public meeting. They can be emailed chains. And this, every now and again, you know, Jim sends out, or I send out, some kind of notification about something that's going on with the town. We really need to remember to say, do not reply all, because once you get a discussion going on the email about the substance of something involving the public business, it's technically a meeting, and it shouldn't be happening. Now, you can, when Jim, or I, or Sheila send out some information about town business, if you want to reply to just Jim and I, that is not a public meeting. You know, I want to provide you my thoughts on this, or I'd like a follow-up question answered, or please be prepared at count, or at the board meeting to discuss, da-da-da. Just direct it to the staff, and exclude your fellow board members from that. Yes?
I had a quick question. Because back when I was on P&amp;Z, you know, we, we would get the packet, and I would say, thanks Sheila, or whoever, you know, sent out the board, you know, just to kind of acknowledge that I received it, more or less.
Not a problem.
Okay, because, you know, I, I was told, don't do that, because you're replying to everybody.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the better practice is just reply to Sheila, or to Nicole, but thank you, I received this, it's not the public business, so, not a meeting. Be wary of group social media contacts, the, I don't know, Silt Neighbors page, or whatever it is you have down here.
Silt Happens.
Silt Happens, okay. Three or more of you get involved in advocating positions related to, to the public's business on that forum, and now all of a sudden, you have a meeting. So I, I encourage you to be thoughtful when using social media for matters that involve the town business. And I say that in a couple of ways, because we're gonna get down here in a second to public records, and you can turn your Facebook account into a public record. Don't do that. Don't discuss, I mean, it's, you know, posting the notice that Nicole comes up with for the concert, hey, we hope to see everybody at the concert, or the ice cream social, or whatever it is, that's okay. But you start kind of putting your policy, thoughts and opinions on your Facebook page, you've just turned your Facebook page into an open record, subject to an open record request, where you have to give it all over to the public. Don't do it, is my, is my recommendation on that. So we talked about social events, where public business not being discussed, not a public meeting. Okay. Executive sessions and the attorney-client privilege.
I have a question, before I move on. So, you were talking about social events. What about, like, perception, public perception? Is that, does that play into that at all?
I mean, I, I think it does, from a good governance standpoint. I don't think that there would be a legal consequence if you're not talking about public business. So, for example, the, back in the day, the Carbondale Town Council, after pretty much every council meeting, would go to, wasn't the Black Nugget, it was two doors down, the, the old cafe that's not operating anymore. And they would sit around and have a beer with each other, and ask how everyone's doing, and mend whatever fences personally needed to be mended, without talking about the public business. Not a public meeting. And so, if, you know, if you want to have a Christmas party, invite all the other trustees over, and if everybody remembers, don't talk about public business.
Just need to stick to it, and not...
Yep, you can, you can do that.
Okay.
All right, so, we have these things called executive sessions. They are provided for under the open meetings law, and, but there are very limited reasons why we can go into executive session and have a discussion that is not public. They, the, the main ones that we deal with at the, at the board level are matters involving negotiation. So, for example, we want to buy a piece of property. We do not have to discuss the value of that property, and what the town is willing to pay, in an open meeting. We get to have those negotiations, and direction to your town staff in, in private. You're receiving legal advice from the town attorney. Matters that could implicate liability, or, even, even if it's just, I want to better understand how this particular law impacts a decision we're going to make, you have the right to receive attorney-client information in private, just the same as any other individual. And we can go into executive session for that. By the way, Jim is not my client. You, seven people acting together, are my client. I take direction from you. It's usually filtered, or coordinated with your town administrator to make things efficient. But from an attorney-client perspective, you are the client. And that means that the attorney-client privilege runs to you as a board. And it is important that people remember, when we go into executive session and discuss matters, not to come out of executive session and talk about what the lawyer said. Carbondale provides great examples. There was a situation a few years ago, I think it was involving a, you know, some either negotiations, or advice from the town attorney involving the new marketplace they have up there. And one of the trustees had a radio program the day after the council meeting on public radio, KDNK, every Thursday, or whatever it was. And this trustee went on KDNK and proceeded to explain everything that the attorney had said in executive session, and waived the privilege. So again, you, as a council, get to retain the privilege of receiving information without the public being able to access it in executive session, unless if it's waived. Now, technically, only you as a board, acting by majority vote, can vote to waive the privilege. But in practice, it only takes one person going outside of executive session, and talking about the legal advice that was given, and that, that privilege probably has been waived at that point. So, please remember, when we go into executive session, you're getting information that is confidential in nature, and it's not to be shared outside of the executive session. To go into executive session requires a two-thirds majority. We have to state the subject of the executive session with some level of specificity. I, I will be working to get a little bit better on, on getting that information onto agendas, so that it's easy for you to read that as part of the motion. We have these lengthy motions that have to be made for executive sessions. Trustee Seifert is really good at reading those off really quick, and, and getting us into executive session. And then, at the end of the day, what we cannot do is, we do not reach decisions in executive session. You can give direction to your town manager, or your town attorney, go look at buying this property, we're willing to pay up to X number of dollars. But ultimately, the decision to purchase the property needs to be made in open session. So, and this is, is a little tricky. I mean, it, it is something I try to pay attention to, you should try to pay attention as well, to that, that point. Open records applies to writings, documents, electronic material that is maintained or kept by a political subdivision for use, and the performance of public functions. It is an incredibly broad definition of what constitutes a public record. You are all public officials, because you are elected, and you sit on the Silt Board of Trustees. Therefore, your emails, your text messages, your social media posts that relate to the public's business are public records. And occasionally, we get a public, an open records request, where it asks for all communications of the Board of Trustees surrounding ordinance number five. And if you have sent emails, or you have sent text messages, even, say, not to three of you, but maybe two of you have been talking about a, a specific agenda item, those are public records. If you do not want it to potentially become public, don't write it. It's the easiest way to think about it. The other thing I would encourage you, this goes back to public meetings, there was a case down in Douglas County a few years ago, where the school board fired the, the superintendent. Superintendent. And what had happened, there had been an election, there were, I don't know, three new trustees, or members of the school board, and they went one-to-one to like four different people. So they never had three people in the room at the same time, but they went one-to-one, they kind of reached an agreement, then they went one-to-one, they reached an agreement, then went to the next person. The district court ruled that was a public meeting. And so, be careful, you know, again, it is not illegal for you to reach out and have a discussion with one of your colleagues on the Board of Trustees, but if you do that one, and then try to solicit thoughts or comments from another trustee, you're walking a, a fine line at that point.
So, what if we find ourselves, like, let's say, I recognize, I have an email chain that has become a public meeting, and then, like, is it best practice to just, like, hand it over to you?
And we, we can disclose it.
Just tell your lawyer, like, I, here's the...
Here, here's the document.
We could, maybe we have to put it in the meeting notes.
In the record. Mm-hmm. And the nice thing about the Open Meetings Act is it generally does give the board the ability to correct a situation. So if something has happened, yes, I think bringing that to Jim's or my attention, and then, you know, we'll put, put that on the agenda for a discussion, and introduce that into the record that this happened, and we're now providing for the full process associated with whatever was discussed.
Is there a statute of limitation of how far back you can go, requiring like records on text messages, and things like that, or goes on forever?
It, it, it does kind of go, there's no real, like, if someone came and asked us, we want all the information in the town's records about some subdivision that was approved in 1955, if the town has it, it's a public record, and we would disclose it. So there's not really a statute of limitation on that. Anyways, my, on the open records, again, my admonition, please don't turn your personal email accounts, your personal text message accounts, your social media accounts into open records. Nobody likes it when the lawyer has to call you and say, download everything from your social media account, because we may be making it available to someone who's asked for it.
How about event participation? You participate on an event, and as a citizen, you post that you participated on, you know, on an event, whether it is a meeting at, with other mayors, like we've had in the past, or is, is, is making it town business...
I would think, I would think that, you know, they, they do have, what, the mayor's and manager's meeting, which they used to. I would think that if there were written communications, and again, this applies to documents, right, that, that dealt with what was said, or happened at the mayor and manager's meeting, that while that is not a public meeting, it is a public record, and if it was in the town's possession, I think we would have to disclose that. Just be aware, no public records are a thing. Let that little light click on occasionally, when you might want to send a text or something that you're like, oh, wait, that could be a public record. Just make sure, you know, you're making those decisions in an informed way. All right. Dealings with employees. This, this is, this is an important topic, because this town has seen its fair share of board members who felt like they wanted to micromanage certain departments in the town, and in response to that, there actually was a charter amendment that was approved by the voters, that essentially says, board members don't get direct intervention or contact with employees. And this is both, it, it, it has some legal ramifications, because you sit as an appellate board to decisions made by Jim Mann. So if Jim has to make an employment decision, and the person doesn't like it, they actually get to bring it to you as the board, and you need to be prepared to sit in a quasi-judicial manner, and hear that information without having a lot of extra information that came from your own engagements with employees. It also is a really important management tool. Your employees need to know that there is one manager. And that, that manager does get direction, policy direction from the Board of Trustees, but any one of you are not the public works director's boss, or the planning director's boss. So you, if you have concerns about employees' performance, events that happened, you need to bring it to the town administrator, because that's part of his job, is to handle those kinds of employment issues. And then, the town administrator will get information and report back to you. So please, do not wander around town hall, asking very specific questions about work or performance. It can lead to lawsuits against the town, under the Civil Rights Act, and it creates a management headache for, for Jim, who's trying to administer his staff. I would note, you have direct control over three positions in the town. They report directly to you, that's the town administrator, the town attorney, and the municipal judge. You appoint those officials. You can technically fire any of those three at your whim. Jim has a contract, the other two of us do not. If you fire Jim for a reason other than cause, the town will pay him severance. But, again, those three members of the, the town administration have a direct supervisory role to, from the Board of Trustees. You appoint the clerk, the police chief, and the treasurer, but these offices are supervised by the town administrator, which is to say, if and when we hire a new person to fill one of those roles, that person ultimately comes to the board, you know, there's an information, opportunity for you to gain information. There actually will be a voice vote, you know, I moved to appoint Mary Smith to the job of police chief, and they have to get a majority of members of the, the board to vote for them. But once those three positions are appointed, supervision is done by town administrator. We talked a little bit about appeals, why you need to stay out of employment issues, because they may end up in a formal hearing in front of you. There are some specific confidentiality requirements about employees. Never spout off during a board meeting about a specific employee's performance. That is prohibited by your charter. If you're going to have a discussion about a specific employee, that employee has the that employee has the right to notice, the right to counsel. And they have the right to decide whether they want that discussion to occur in open session or in executive session. So it is just fine to recognize the good deeds of your hard-working employees. But if you have a concern, that needs to be handled through formal channels and not in a public meeting. Okay? Conflicts of interest. What is a conflict? A matter in which a board member has a substantial personal or financial interest, direct or indirect, including held through a spouse or family member other than the common public interest or on any question concerning his or her conduct. So if there is a question about your conduct as a trustee, you have a conflict, you don't want to participate in that discussion. As Jerry mentioned, if you have a direct financial interest in the outcome of a decision that's coming before the board, there is a conflict of interest, you need to recuse. There is a requirement that conflicts of interest be disclosed. In fact, we usually have an item on our agenda where the mayor will say, are there any conflicts of interest tonight? Again, these generally are financial. I have a financial interest associated with something coming on the agenda. It could be something that wasn't directly financial. The question is, what is the common public interest? I think it's when a trustee's concern is not dissimilar to the concerns of other members of the public or the board. An example I use is you live on Elm Street. A subdivision is planned at the end of Elm Street, which will add traffic to Elm Street. Do you have a conflict of interest to participate in the, the decision-making about that, that subdivision? I think the answer is you do not have a conflict of interest because your interest is the same as everyone else who lives on Elm Street. And you have, you know, your, your participation, your ability to bring those interests or concerns or insights into the public process is not barred. Now, if a cement plant was under a permitting requirement right next to your house, your house specifically, and you were going to, in order to the benefit or to the impacts of that land use, you probably do have a conflict of interest in that situation because it's much more concrete.
Concrete, concrete plant.
Yeah, there we go. That was good, wasn't it? Yeah. I didn't even think of that one. The rule is when you have a, a conflict, you announce it. When the item comes up on the agenda, you get up from the dais and you actually leave the room. And before the decision is made, you're not trying to influence the opinions of your fellow members on the board. So conflicts, you know, there is also a provision that, you know, there's kind of this appearance of a conflict. So-and-so is best friends with the person coming in front of the board asking for some approval that's controversial. It's not technically a conflict under the rules that it's family members that, that you have to pay attention to, that they have a financial outcome in the decision. But best practice probably is that you would recuse yourself because you have a deep personal relationship with the applicant and an appearance of a conflict could be perceived by the public. This also applies to situations where you, you kind of indirectly have an interest in the outcome of a decision, even though it's like legislative and there was a, there's this thing called the Colorado Ethics, Independent Ethics Commission. And they, and an item came up, it was like so-and-so manages short-term rentals. There's a short-term rental ordinance on the agenda. Can they participate in that? And the ethics opinion, which arguably is not binding on you because you're a home rural municipality. But the ethics board said no because there was an indirect financial benefit into how that ordinance was ultimately shaped to the, the member of the board who was managing those rentals. So we don't, we don't get these situations too often. If you see something on an agenda and if it triggers a question in your mind, call Jim. Jim will get in touch with me. We'll probably then have a call with you and we will work through it. You know, my general attitude is you ran for the board. I want you to participate as much as you legally can. But at the same time, we want to protect the process and the integrity of the board. And occasionally, I will say, I think you should recuse. This is an interesting thing. The town attorney does not get to make the decision about whether somebody has a conflict or not. If they like refuse to recuse themselves, you get to do that. Now, you can ask me questions about it. But at the end of the day, I can't force somebody not to participate. Only you as a board can make that determination.
Sorry, quick question. That's a majority vote by the remainder of the board?
Yes. Code of ethics, because we're getting, we're doing fine. Okay. GIFs. Do not accept or solicit GIFs from people who may have business coming in front of the board of trustees in excess of $75. That is a number that goes up by the Consumer Price Index every year. Just happens to be a nice round number for 2024. Started at $50 15 years ago. And you should not accept GIFs that would tend to improperly influence you or there might be a perception in the public that that was an attempt to try and improperly influence you. It just, you know, it, we want a clean government where people don't believe that so-and-so got special treatment because they gave everybody a Waterford pen or something like that. So, but the, the dollar amount is 75 bucks. You should not do business with the town as a general matter. I have not seen this come up here in one of my other towns. This has come up a couple of times because a former member on the council had an excavating business and the town needed excavating work. If it goes out for a general public bid and they are the lowest bidder, they can be considered for that work, but they don't get to participate in the decision-making. So if, if you ever were like, hey, I think I want to bid on a project for the town, again, come talk to Jim and myself. Ex parte communications. This is also an ethical issue because you sit as a fiduciary. And therefore, you have fiduciary obligations to maintain both the confidences that you're given by the town. Those usually will come in an executive session. But also to make sure that your communications with the public conform with the requirements and in particular, the quasi-judicial hearing requirements that we discussed. You can be forced to recuse yourself if you have significant ex parte communications about something coming before the board that is quasi-judicial in nature. Confidential information, again, we talked about this. Don't release confidential information, especially if it was given to you in executive session. Equality of treatment. This is in your, your resolution that's posted up there. It's not on the board, but it's part of this resolution. We, we, what is it called? The good old boys network or whatever that, you know, the government, oh, I know so-and-so and I, we need to make this happen for so-and-so because they're a good old boy, blah, blah, blah. We endeavor to make sure people are treated equally when they come before the council or before the board. And, you know, I would, I think this is more of a mentality than anything else. You know, if someone asks you that you know, hey, can you put in a good word for me? The answer is, you know, I appreciate that you want to do this or that with the town. Please come to the public hearing or to the meeting, discuss it. You're going to get a fair shake. And so we, we don't, we don't want people feeling like they either have a leg up or they're somehow disadvantaged because of who knows whom on the council. Another thing I would encourage you never to say to a peace officer, do you know who I am? That will both end up in the newspaper. Be very embarrassing to you. It also creates a, a problem because you're trying to use your position to influence the application of the law within the town. So don't ever use those words. And finally, we talked about when it comes to the ethics code. You know, the attorney and the manager, we play an important part in this in trying to monitor what's going on. But at the end of the day, you are the decision-makers. So if, if there is an ethics issue that you want to discuss, bring it to Jim and myself. And if it rises to the level that we think it's something that, that the board needs information and to consider, we'll put that on the next agenda and there will be a public discussion. And you then get to make a decision. Thank you for your attention. Again, Jim and I are, we're always available to talk about these issues. Being a member of a public board, I think there's a learning curve. And the longer you do it, sometimes the easier it gets because these concepts are ingrained. But we want to make sure you feel like you have the support to do your job well. If there's something we can do for you, let us know.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Real quick. Back to the dealings with employees. What if an employee comes to you to complain? You just have to say, no, I can't, I can't.
That's what I would prefer you to say. Yep.
We just encourage them to discuss it with their, with their department head or supervisor or Jim.
And this is a small town. I mean, you probably know many of the employees that the town has just from being a resident in Sill. That would, that will come up. That's a great question. And the answer is, sorry, can't talk to you. Go talk to your supervisor.
And my other question was contract employees, like the town engineer or the town planner. I mean, obviously, we're not going to badmouth them in front of a meeting. But how does that, they're just like any other normal employee.
Well, talk, talk to Jim, number one. If you have concerns about, that could be my performance. That could be our town engineer's performance. Those are the main contract employees, I think, that we have. Jim has an obligation because he also has a fiduciary responsibility to the council to make sure you are getting good information and being responsive to concerns that you may have. So you'd go through Jim on that.
Thank you. And I guess, was I supposed to wear a blue shirt tonight? Because every guy in this room has a blue shirt.
Get the memo?
We're getting to the, we're getting to the end of summer. So everybody's got to bring out their short-sleeve blue shirts. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I turn the time back over to you.
All right. Any questions for? Thank you very much.
Good reminders.
Good, very good reminders, yeah. And we'll start doing some roll call votes here.
Yeah. Well, you know, you, you remember these things. When you go through it, it's like, oh yeah, I'm supposed to do that.
Yeah, yes. I guess other than that, I'm showing seven minutes on my computer clock. So we'll take a seven-minute break before the regular meeting.
Before the fun begins.